Tom Mulaney, 14 East Main Street.
Tom Mulaney, 14 East Main Street. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and all of them. I came here tonight anticipating speaking really fast because of a limit on...
Well, it's ten minutes.
...speech. I realize that, and I thank you, Mr. Naughton, for your comments tonight and enabling that particular motion. Last meeting, I spoke to our esteemed town attorney concerning my obsession with the way these meetings are conducted and amendments are made. Mr. Gallow graciously explained to me that many towns and municipalities have a policy whereby resolutions, ordinances, and any other changes are read at one meeting, but no motion is made nor vote taken until a following meeting. This process gives the citizenry the opportunity to study said changes and voice any concerns, pro or qua, to the Commissioners prior to a vote. I respectfully submit that we adopt this practice for Rising Sun permanently. This practice in no way violates the Roberts Rules of Order. Furthermore, Mr. Naughton, I would like to address you on the very item of the time to speak. I think three minutes is a very short time, but I realize that ten minutes per person, if you have a large meeting, can take you well into the night. I would propose a compromise, maybe of around six minutes, because that would give the citizenry the opportunity to express their feelings and also would not have us setting up cots in the back. So I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Mulaney, you have a question mark.
There's still a question mark.
Okay, well, your time is now.
Excuse me? Are you challenging me, Mr. Mayor?
No, I'm not challenging you. I'm telling you...
Okay, I said I was not going to speak, and let's let go of that.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mulaney. Okay, Brian LaShere. No, okay. Roger Lamb.
I will pass tonight, but thanks for the opportunity. I will pass on my opportunity to speak tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Dee Emslay.
I will also pass, but thank you for the opportunity.
Jeff Hawkenbaugh. Hawkenbaugh.
I'm going to pass tonight.
You're going to pass, Tom. Well, we're going to be off early tonight. Lisa Toner.
I just have one question. The folks at Rising Sun are paying for the water and sewer projects, so if one of them walks up to any of you and says, "How's it going?", that means none of you can answer them, or you'll, or you can be removed.
Well, you have to ask Mr. Bonnenberger for permission. I even have to ask Mr. Bonnenberger for permission.
I'm, I'm, I think I'm asking that to Mr. Naughton. So none of you can answer, but if a resident walks up and says, "How's the sewer project going?".
I can explain how we handle that after the meeting. You can talk after.
Okay, I, I, yeah. Explain it now. I'd like to hear it in public form, I think, so that everybody understands.
This is citizen comment. I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Okay, I, I have a comment on the sewer system. I dropped by on the sewer system the other day just to see how things were going, and I talked to the people there and got an idea. The next day, they were instructed not to talk to me at all. And Mr. Naughton has sent an email. I understand, I've never seen it, that I'm not allowed to talk about the sewer system. Now, I believe that I do have some knowledge of sewer systems, and I can be helpful to the town, and I already have been helpful in expediting the start of construction. And I believe that I could be of more help in expediting things and getting problems, and there are problems that are not being discussed. Mr. McMinnon, who is the project officer for Robson, wanted to be here tonight, and I'm sure he was told to stay away. I discussed that with Mr. Bonnenberger, and I returned the call to Mr. McMinnon as to, you know, what the situation was, and he won't answer my telephone call. So he evidently has been reinforced that you don't talk to Bob Fisher. Now, is that the way to run a town, that the mayor can't talk to whoever he wants to?
I wasn't going to read this, Mr. Mayor, but...
Please do.
I think I need to. This is a note from Adam Smith at CDM Smith, who was one of the young inspectors on site. Calvin, the mayor was on-site at the WWTP construction site today from approximately 11:45 a.m. to 12:15 p.m. After parking on Route 1, he proceeded to walk through the site to Howard Robson's trailer. I did not notice him being on-site right away as I was in the engineer's trailer checking emails prior to lunch, and he did not drive onto the site. But one of Howard Robson's men alerted me to his presence. Upon entry to Howard Robson's trailer, the mayor was in George Connor's superintendent's office. I greeted him, and he went immediately into questioning me on what delays, change orders, and unresolved issues there were on the project that are holding it up. He was very persistent in his questioning, and I attempted to relay the point that our job here on-site is to make sure that the constructed plan, plant meets the plans and specifications and is not to discuss change orders or unresolved issues that may or may not be out there. When I asked about what issues he was talking about, he didn't have any specific answer, but eventually became particularly persistent on an issue he was calling the eight-foot-to-ten-foot sump, which the terminology of sump did not make sense to me. He eventually agreed to sign the visitor's log, and I told him if he grabbed a hard hat, I would be happy to show him what was to be accomplished today and show him the site. He did not seem to acknowledge the statement and went on with questioning about delays and quotations issues. Eventually, he calmed down, and we left the trailer, and I showed him around the site on the way back to his car. While in the trailer during the discussion, the mayor took a piece of paper and wrote down my name and proceeded to write notes to pointed questions he had been asking me. I did not want to answer for fear that any response being construed in an improper manner, to which he wrote down that I refused to answer. At some point, I mentioned that he was taught to talk to you, Calvin, to be updated on the progress, and he immediately responded with a statement affected to, "So, you're kicking me off the site?". He also made the statement that this was the town's project and not Calvin's project, and he believes the WWTP project is being kept a big secret. He stated that he will be at the next and all other progress meetings from now on. My insertion here is something he was always invited to. We left on decent terms, but one of the last statements he made was that in order to get an answer, he usually has to talk to three people and piece together what is really going on. So I am unsure as to who else he is going to talk to. When walking around, he seems to have some misinformation about what was actually being constructed and only a basic understanding of what was happening on-site. Please note that during the entire discussion and the walk around the site on his way in, around, and way out, he was not wearing a hard hat or steel-toed boots in an active construction zone. Adam. Thank you.
Most of it's true, but not all of it is quite true, because I didn't really... Well, first of all, I haven't seen the drawings. I know the drawings are there. I should take the time to look at the drawings and the scope of work and all that stuff. I was just, and I had already talked to Calvin, and Calvin did not give me the information, so, you know. In the, in the past, Mr. At, Mr. Smith hasn't been there, so I didn't have any idea that Mr. Smith was on-site, and certainly I can buy a pair of steel-toed shoes and I will gladly wear a hard hat. I mean, you should advise people at the gate that they have to do that. It says to report to the trailer, which I did. I walked directly to the trailer. I didn't go anyplace in the site. And he was gracious, so he explained where the difference, how far the tanks and the ore voltage was going to be and where the headwater works were going to be. So that was fun. So I don't know what that hurt for him to tell me that and why it was any secret that there were some open change orders that haven't been resolved. So, you know, and that's where my expertise is, in expediting things. I've proven that on getting this project started. I hope that I can continue to do that. So with that, if there's anybody else that would like to speak, Mrs. LaShere.
Oh, yeah. Does anybody go up there?
If you want to talk, I'm, if you're in the middle of the room.
Okay. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. I appreciate it. I guess what I wanted to say is a public comment to, respectfully, to everyone at the table. I, what is your name? I'm sorry. Ruth. Ruth. There are certain parts of what Ruth said that I have to agree with. I'm a little take, this is like the most bizarre thing I've ever seen this evening. I just have to be very honest with you, because I mean that respect, not in a disrespectful way, Mr. Mayor, at all. I'm sitting back here, and I'm kind of like feel like, is it me that's not really keeping up with things or what's going on? Because I, I, I leave my 12-year-old at home. I cook, hurry up and cook dinner, and I leave her, and I know that some other people here, they rush from work to come here, and because we, we really want to make a difference in the town, and I know that you do too. It's just that I think that there's protocol in every sense of government, and I think that there's different departments, that one department comes up with an idea, and then they bring it to another department and so forth. I, I kind of am confused about this whole secret language, like the secret, like you say, everyone's keeping secrets from you. I, I'm just, I'm concerned, because I, I don't think that people are trying to be vindictive. I, I think that everybody's trying to do a job within the roles that they're given, and then, as the mayor, you are the person that they come to, like for, I guess, the executive meetings or what have you, and then it's kind of like, everybody's in the room, you toss the ball around, and you go over the plan and talk about the pros and the cons. To me, that just seems like how, like it should work. I, I don't think, I, I think that the air, if I'm using the right word, the air within this, the government, the tone, the tone with at the table, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, if you could just work on maybe, like maybe like a glass-half-full approach instead of a glass-half-empty approach to being the mayor, I think that everyone would benefit greatly. I, I think that there's less of a conspiracy there than you really realize. I think everybody wants to...
Were you at the first meeting?
I, I was, I was at the first meeting, actually. I, I've been at every meeting, and what meetings I haven't been, I've watched them on video. And really...
You don't think there was a conspiracy at the first meeting?
Honestly, sir, I would put my right hand on the Bible and swear in front of court of law that I don't think there's conspiracy.
That they just took all the duties of the mayor away?
Well, I think that if you sat down with President Obama, or you sat down with a governor of, I don't know, O'Malley. I'm an artist. I mean, really, I, this is, I'm really out of my element here. But I mean, the thing is that, like, if you sat down with Governor O'Malley, or whoever that's in the highest rank of things, there...
But that's not a small town, that's a, a small town.
But I understand, but what you understand is it is a small town, but it's a small town that is now doing big business. And with big business comes liability, it comes protocol, it, there's all kinds of issues, there's lawyers involved, and I do mean this respectfully, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing against you at all. I, I, I just think that it, we are a small town, but we live in a world of big business, and things are being put into place within our town so that we don't have liabilities, that we don't have lawsuits. And I just, I just ask, as a personal favor to, as, from a town person, that maybe less conspiracy, more teamwork, if possible.
What have I been saying for every meeting? That's exactly what I was doing.
But that honestly, that you may feel that way, but that is not what is being presented to the people in the audience. And again, this is not a personal attack. I have the utmost respect for you as the mayor, you know, I mean, just as all the Commissioners. I have faith in all of you that you're going to run the town according to what's best for the town, because, I mean, you're our government. You're the people we look to, to say, "Okay, we're going to make Rising Sun the best place it can possibly be." Do you see what I'm saying to you? So right now, I'm not feeling so confident. You know, I need to feel confident in, in my mayor.
What else? Can you tell me specifically what you think I need to do? This email that Mrs. Osborne just read was not sent, I didn't get a copy of that.
But see, a lot of times, you may not get a copy of emails. I mean, my husband is a director of IT at his company. He may not get emails, you know, and then they go to a meeting, and then things are discussed, and then it's kind of like, I think, what's the term, like the boiler room. Everybody brings their ideas, you discuss what's, and you bounce ideas off of each other. I mean, I think that you, with all due respect, I, I think that you feel like people are out to get you, or, or some...
Well, they're, they're, they've changed their minds.
I think people are, I think that as a town member, I can tell you, I'm a little nervous. I'm just a little nervous, because I, I just, I just wish that, that it was more of a team and that the, the future of Rising Sun was in focus, and I, I think that everybody else is kind of there, but I'm just, was kind of hoping that you'd be a little, just a little more of a team player.
Being a team player.
Yeah, sometimes being a team...
That's the first time I've ever been accused of being a team player.
Well, that's not, sometimes being a team player doesn't mean...
I'm supposed to be the captain of the ship. That's what the, the, and I don't know of any captain of any ship that took orders from the subordinates. I thought he gave orders.
Well, I understand, but I don't think a mayor gives orders. I think a mayor works as part of a team, and he may delegate.
Well, so does the captain of a ship. If he don't, he, he don't, he has mutiny, which is exactly what we have in Rising Sun. So how do you, how do you cure mutiny?
I'm not really sure, because I really don't understand where this conversation is going.
Okay. This is where I believe a town meeting should be, that you should talk to the people and know what's on the people's mind and act accordingly.
I, I just want my government to do...
And I appreciate your comments. I appreciate everybody's comments, whether they agree with me or they don't agree, believe me, I listen to them, and...
Well, may I ask you a question, sir?
Yes.
Do you, do you view yourself like the captain of the ship?
I do.
You do? Okay. Then that makes sense then. I get it.
I'd like to change subjects for a minute.
Thank you.
Your name, please.
I've never interviewed myself. My name is Lynn Griffin. I live in 207 Maple Leaf Drive. We have some big grass, some really big grass that needs to be mowed. Who do we talk to about getting that mowed?
When you come into Town Hall, there's a form to fill out and ask, you know.
Yeah.
Oh, I wanted to bring that up earlier.
I've spoken to Mr. Bonnenberger.
Because it's like, and you're like, oh, no.
I meant to bring it up earlier, because I only found out about these forms last, this week, so, you know, and I've lived here, you know, forever and didn't know how to make a complaint, and I did make some suggestions to improve the process with these forms, is that you fill out a form, tell what your complaint is, where you live, da-da-da-da. It goes to Calvin, it goes to Stephanie, it's given out to the crew to take care of whichever crew needs to, whichever one of our personnel needs to solve the problem. My suggestion to Calvin was that it come to the Commissioner in charge of that particular item, and then we follow up on it along with the employees to find out, you know, what's the progress on this, how are we getting it done, which is, you know, like the repairs on COG Avenue are in process now. So, you know, we talked about them two months ago, probably, but they're finally in process, and so just come to Town Hall and fill out this form, and I'm not sure what the form is called, but I'll get Pam to get some out, so that when you come into the desk, they're available.
I'll give you guys a couple days.
Okay, thank you.
My answer to that, I told Calvin Bonnenberger that the grass up there needed to be mowed two weeks ago. So, you know, that's, if I'd known there was a form to fill out, I would have filled out the form.
I want a request for action form. Okay, great, thank you. That came from...
So we learn things.
Thank you.
I'm learning things from you folks, so I can do a better job of trying to make the town a better place to live.
Jeff?
Would I just suggest a different type of analogy for you? You're not really the captain of the ship. You're like the lead horse in a team. It's all supposed to be drawn, pulling in the same direction.
Well, I have to have the horses going in the same direction. I'm going, or they're probably going to pull me backwards.
You're supposed to all be pulling together in the same direction.
What have I been saying for, ever since I recovered from the initial meeting? I've been saying exactly that. So is there any other comments? I mean, yes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Your name, please.
Karen Long, I live at 201 Maple Leaf. I can give another... You're kind of like in the same situation as our president is. He's the president of the United States, but he does not have the final say, and he has all these other sections, and he can't pass something just by himself or have all to say, so why should you? I mean...
I didn't say I had to have all of them, but I should be a, a, a member of the team. I shouldn't be excluded.
Yes, definitely, you should be the member, a member of the team, and I agree with what Ruth said earlier and Shelley, that we don't see much respect up there between people. And that may be the reason why a lot of people don't come to these meetings, because who wants to sit here and, you know, and see the disrespect?
More people come now that there's disrespect than ever came before.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, I realize more of people...
And, and that, that I think is very positive.
That's fair, yes.
That people are interested, and just like me talking to Mr. LaShere tonight, that is, I believe, a great benefit to the town.
I agree.
I just think that it's not, it's not, it's also, it's the disrespect, but I see just across the board absolute frustration. I mean, like, it's, it's there.
Oh, yes, on our side too. But that's, our side as well.
Yes, it's just, it's just frustration, and rightly so, you know.
These folks are getting what they want, so I don't know why they're frustrated.
But they're, they're, they're trying to do what's right for the town.
No, they're trying to do what the town has done in the previous administrations, and I believe that I was elected to make changes in town. I was very clear in that, in fact, too clear in it. Yes, Mr. LaShere?
Brian LaShere, 102 Broadleaf Court. I've got an analogy for you. I feel like we're all on a ship, and all of us on this side of the table are stuck in the engine room, and it's sinking, and we've got no chance to get out, because the property values, we can't sell our houses, and quite honestly, if I could pick my house up and move it three miles east, I would do it, but unfortunately, my house isn't worth what I paid for four years ago, and I'm stuck in Rising Sun, and I'm not a quitter, so it's, you know, it's, we've got to fix what we have, because basically, I mean, it's, we don't see a lot of leadership. That's, that's one of the biggest things, and that's what everybody's saying.
Well, who's supposed to be the leader? I'm the elected leader of this town.
The whole group, because my, my understanding goes the...
There's one person.
Of the, the Rising Sun government is, the mayor doesn't have direct authority or power over anyone, and the Commissioners are actually the only ones with the power. The mayor doesn't have any of power.
Read the old ordinance, please. I'll furnish your copy.
My name's Ted Colodzey. I live at 20 North Walnut Street. Well, I'm kind of new to these meetings. I see there are definitely two sides of it, and I wasn't going to actually step in and say anything, but I think, K-O-L-O-D-Z-E-Y. Did, right. If you can remember that, you got ten points. Polish name. Slavic names. Now, I do see there's a lot of disrespect, and on both sides of the aisle, and I don't, a lot of these issues, I don't quite understand yet, but as far as being the leader, it's not, you can't just assume everyone's going to do what you want. It has to be, you have to get people to agree with you. Like she was saying, the president doesn't just, this is my way or the highway. It's not a dictatorship. It has to be, if you have a way to do things, you have to convince the other people to vote your way. And what I'm seeing now is more, you're hard in your ways, maybe everyone else is hard in their ways, but if you guys don't work together, which I don't, right now, I don't see that'll ever happen, but someone has to give...
I have hope.
Well, no, I know, but...
Not much else but hope.
You, you can say that and say, "I want hope, then everyone's going to do what I want."
No, no.
No, no, well, let me finish, because I'm not necessarily against what you're saying. I'm just saying, you have to get people, convince, convince us, and then we'll get on the Commissioners, "Hey, stop arguing with them." And they should do exactly the opposite. You have to get either us to back you, or you have to get them to back you. One way or the other, right now, like, we're, we're in the boiler room and ship is on fire. You know, but that's the thing, is as the captain, you have to make the decision, is what you want more important or the town more important? And I think what you need to do is find a way, I mean, I don't know, just find a way to either work together, and if you, if you are so convinced you're right, you have to convince the majority of us to get your back, and then we will do the job to convince them.
Well, I thought I was convincing more people, but, you know, I've seen tonight that I wasn't as successful as I thought I was.
Well, I know, it's, it's, what I'm saying is easier said than done, but I'm not mayor, so...
Okay, well, thank you for your comments. I appreciate everybody. Is there anybody else who wants to talk?
Change of mind.
You've found your voice.
Dee Emslay, 479 Slices Mill Road. I am not a resident.
Well, we don't hold that against you.
But I noticed on the schedule that the MML conference is coming up, and I'm wondering if any of the elected officials are going.
There are six of the elected officials, and Mr. Bonnenberger has chosen to go to the ICMA meeting instead of going to the...
But the, the four Commissioners and the mayor are all going to MML?
I was told that six people were going.
But there's people from Board of Appeals and Pinington.
It's unfortunate that you're going to miss some of the Civil War reenactment.
Yeah, it is.
Which is my plug for the Civil War reenactment.
And that's important.
It is important.
Help you out, I hear the cannons from there.
From this.
I hope we resolve it in the favor of the Union. Okay, is there any other comments? I mean, I think it's been a productive meeting. I hear what you say. I'll try to see what I can do about it. There is, are things in progress that hopefully will resolve this, but, you know, I am very, very frustrated in being elected to make changes, but everybody else seems to think things were peachy creamy in the, in the past election. I mean, and every, a lot of people I talked to expressed the same thing Mr. LaShere said. I mean, and every, a lot of people I talked to expressed the same thing Mr. LaShear said. If I could get well and move out of town, I'd be long gone. And that's not the way you create a good small-town atmosphere. It requires input from the people as well. And, and there will be an election next June, and you can express it. And, and as far as I'm concerned, if I have anything to do, you will be able to express it between now and then. Thank you very much. I appreciate all of you coming, and I, I, I think that it has changed the town in a positive direction for people to become interested in the town. I hope to see you in future meetings.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Will you adjourn?
I second.
Okay, your turn. And my telephone number is, we have a motion to adjourn. It's been seconded, and I don't think it takes a eye to do it, but... And if you want to talk to me, just call me, and I'm sorry, Mrs. Griffin.